United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will call our meeting to order. And our first order of business this morning is a presentation on the Aerospace Center for Excellence and the 49th Annual Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo Update from Gene Conrad, who is the President, CEO of ACE and Sun 'n Fun. And it's wonderful to have you in our chamber, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager. It feels awfully familiar up here this morning.
[laughter]
I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you all, talk about the Aerospace Center for Excellence and Sun 'n Fun, which is, we are, I think, eight days out. And hi, Mike, how are you? I'm not here to ask for any money, so thank you.
He doesn't know what to do with himself.
So what I want to be able to do for you this morning is just kind of give you a brief history lesson on Sun 'n Fun and where we've been over the last 50 years, then talk about the Aerospace Center for Excellence, and then obviously Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo, which is again on our heels here. So Sun 'n Fun through the years. 1975 was our first actual fly-in at the airport out of Lakeland International Airport, up on the north side of the airfield. In 1977, we moved to the southwest side where we reside today on 177 acres that we lease from the great airport in City Lakeland here. We built our first exhibit buildings back in 1980. In 1989, our partnership actually with Kathleen High School started when we donated $1,000 to Kathleen High School and an aviation project school flight that they had at that time. As you know, Kathleen is tied, or the Central Florida Aerospace Academy is tied to Kathleen High School. In 1992, the Florida Air Museum was constructed. In 2011, we built the Central Florida Aerospace Academy. In 2015, Lake Lanero Club, our high school flying club, was constructed. And then in August of 2021, we opened up Skylab Innovation Center, which is our centerpiece that's now attached to the Florida Air Museum. So lots of progress over the last 50 years. Also, just wanted to, because it was a little, I'll be honest with you, it was a little confusing for me sometimes when I was, when I was the director of the airport. But, you know, our structure, as far as our companies and what we do out there, has changed over time as well. So we have two 501(c)(3) not-for-profits. The first, back, I think it was eight or nine years ago, we had Sun 'n Fun Flying, Inc., again, a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, and then also the Florida Air Museum, Inc. Now, what's happened over time in our restructuring, we've taken the Florida Air Museum, Inc., that 501(c)(3), that is now the Aerospace Center for Excellence and is the parent company. And then Sun 'n Fun Flying, Inc. is a subsidiary along with the Florida Air Museum and Elevate. So I know there's been, at least for me, there was a little bit confusion, but again, the Aerospace Center for Excellence, so when you see that on my chest, that's our parent company. And then the Sun 'n Fun Flying, Inc. is obviously our flying and our subsidiary now for us. So our mission is to engage, educate, and accelerate the next generation of aerospace professionals at ACE. I know a lot of you have been out there. We have been super busy over the last year. If, I'm sure you know, we hired Eric Crump, who is the Aerospace Director at Polk State College Aerospace and created that program. So he's now running ACE for us and all of our educational programming. And he has done a phenomenal job of building up our, our, our programming and everything that we're doing at ACE. So what is ACE? ACE is our 25-acre campus on the Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo campus. We have the Central Florida Aerospace Academy, Lake Lanero Club, Travis Career College, the Florida Air Museum, our Skylab Innovation Center, and Elevate. So as you all know, the Central Florida Aerospace Academy, this year we have 385 students in the high school, which is our highest numbers. Next year, we're looking to be at over 400. We were actually at 450 this year, but we had to bring those numbers down because we didn't, they could, Polk County Public Schools didn't have the teachers. So we would have been over 400 this year, but we plan to be up 400, over 400 next year. The five tracks that we have at the Central Florida Aerospace Academy is aerospace engineering, aerospace technologies, which is our pilot program, avionics technician, UAS drones, and also our AMP program. And then this year, starting this past fall, our business management program. So if someone wanted to be an airport director, for example, they would follow that track. Our scholarship program, as you all know, we have a unique partnership. We constructed the high school again back in 2011, so we own that building. Polk County Public Schools leases that building from us, and all the monies that we generate each month from the lease payment go into our scholarship program for our pilot training. So as of last week, we're at 161 private pilots, and we've awarded over $3 million in scholarships for these, for these kids. Again, 161 private pilots, and at any given time, we have anywhere from 30 to 40 kids in that program flying. So it's been very, very good, and our success rate is about 85%. Because of the success and all the partnerships and the things that have happened here with, whether it's the airports, City Lakeland, Polk County Public Schools, we now have the Central Florida Aerospace Academy, Winter Haven. So they just, we, unfortunately, we're going to do the ribbon cutting on March 9th, but we had that unfortunate accident over in Winter Haven. We're going to do the ribbon cutting for, for this high school, but they have portables on the Winter Haven Regional Airport now. So if you think about the county, we all know it's the fourth largest in the state. You know, we have about 200,000 in our MSA over here, but when you look at the east side, you know, there's another 500,000 people over there, and we need to be able to service those families and those kids. And they have 150 kids in their program, so hopefully in the next five years, there will be a brick-and-mortar facility out there at the airport. So we're working on that as well. So, but we're, we're very excited about their progress and success in Winter Haven. And again, because of the growth and everything that's occurred back in 2013, Polk State College started their aerospace program on Lake Linder International Airport. They have 250 students, 162, you know, students have, are in the pilot pipeline, and 40 student graduates this year. So very robust program, and they do a phenomenal job out there at Lakeland Linder. Also, the Lake Lanero Club, we're very, very proud of them. Mr. Ray, who is a benefactor, who donated the seven and a half million dollars to build the Central Florida Aerospace Academy, donated another million dollars to build this facility. It is absolutely phenomenal. There's 65 kids in that program, so they just walk across the street, go to their hangar, take off in Piper Cubs, Cubs on grass on an international airport. Pretty cool stuff. But they have five projects, five aircraft, and they're working on five restoration projects as well. And they're also planning to fly up to Oshkosh again this year, so we're excited about that. Again, our friends over in Winter Haven, because of the high school and the success they have there, they have the Aspiring Aviators Aero Club, so they have their own high school flying club as well over in Winter Haven. And this year, they had some challenges after the hurricane with their hangar. And so we, we were very fortunate with where we are and the position our organization is, and we donated $10,000 to their program to help them stay robust and keep going. So they're doing great in Winter Haven. Also Travis Technical College, our AMP program, which is on our campus. One of the big projects, projects we're going to work on over the next several years is to build a new brick-and-mortar on the Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Campus, so we can actually grow the program, because right now, we can only run about 25 to 50 through the program at a time. We need to be upwards of 200 or more at a time, so we're going to be focused on that over the next several years. Also, our Florida Air Museum. We're really focused on the Florida Air Museum to, you know, really reinvent some of the exhibits that are there. It needs to be more hands-on, STEM-based, interactive for our kiddos. We also started Storytime at the Florida Air Museum, so any two- to five-year-olds. Every Tuesday at 10:30, we have anywhere from 60 to 80 that are showing up, that are coming to the Florida Air Museum and for Storytime. It's a fabulous program. If you're ever bored and at 10:30 in the morning on a Tuesday, come on out. It is really, really fun. But that's what it's all about for us. You know, it's about cradle to cockpit. We want to get these kids as young as possible, get them introduced into aviation. And also during the BASH this year, which is our big fundraiser during, during Sun 'n Fun, we're going to be raising funds to build a playground that's attached to the Florida Air Museum as well. So when those kids come out, we want to keep them entertained and engaged, and it also helps the parents, because I have a three-year-old, and they need to be entertained, so. Again, one of our great centerpieces is the Skylab Innovation Center. This is our hands-on, purpose-built labs. I know a lot of you have toured it out there. So we have five different labs, including the museum, but we have Science on the Sphere, which is that first picture you see there on the left. Our Siemens Engineering Labs, we have 3D printers. Kids can go in there and program and generate 3D, whether they're aircraft models or actual pieces that you can put on an aircraft. Our Redbird Flight Simulation Lab, and also our Drone Lab out there at the Skylab Innovation Center. We also just opened up the Lights Lean House Media Center. So during the BASH last year, we raised over $150,000 to build that media center. It is state-of-the-art. If you come out, if you've seen any of my videos as of late, we have way, we have great technology now to make me look good, which I haven't been so great, you know, but we have, that media center and our capabilities now are just phenomenal. So we're excited about that. And also during the fly-in last year, we did the ribbon cutting on Elevate, which is our aerospace and logistics incubator. So we have six companies in there right now, and our first company just moved out because they're, they've scaled up and they're, have their own space now and moving on. So it's been a very successful program for us as well. So coming soon with ACE, one of the big things for us, especially for the families out there, last year we did three summer camps. This year, we're doing 15. So people can find this information on aceedu.org. And the, the summer camps are geared towards seven to 17-year-olds. Again, 15 summer camps, and we're about half-full at this point for those camps in June. Enhanced educational field trips in Skylab. So for Skylab, this next school year, every single fifth grader in Polk County is coming through Skylab. So in partnerships with our airport, Lake Linder International Airport, Bartow, Winter Haven, and Lake Wales, collectively, they're helping fund that for us and the Polk County Public Schools to bring all, all of those fifth graders through our program. So that's, we're really excited about that. ACE's High Achievement Program, that is our program that, again, with our friends at Lake Linder International Airport, and also the Ray Foundation, that is our achievement program. It's essentially a mentoring program for underserved and underrepresented communities. And essentially, there's three, there are three phases. One is a discovery flight. The second is a trip to Kennedy Space Flight Center, and the third is a trip to Orlando to JetBlue to get an A320 simulator. So we just want to get these kids and let them know that these things are available to them, and we have the programs and the scholarships to help them make it through to whatever their goals are at the end of the day. We're also working, this next year, we'll have an after-school program. Our Lake Lanero Club can only take so many kids from our high school, so our after-school program will be in our Beulah Restoration Center, where they'll be able to work on projects, do woodworking, learn how to weld, metalworking, and all of that. So we're super excited about that program. We talked about the media center, also the capital campaign for our new AMP facility, which is Airframe and Power Plant, and then also the educational expansion at the Florida Air Museum. So lots of activity, lots of great things, but all of this can be found on our website at aceedu.org. So now, to the fun stuff, Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo. Not that that's-
That was pretty fun.
I know, I know. But we're super excited. This is our 49th Annual Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo. The Blue Angels will be back with us this year. They always draw a huge crowd, so we're excited. We're going to have the C5 Super Galaxy will be there this year. You've seen the C-17 in the past. The C5 is much larger. It'll be the largest aircraft ever to land at Lake Linder International Airport, so we're excited to have that aircraft with us. Also this year, over 500 exhibitors. We are way ahead of where we have been in the past as far as exhibitors and vendors at, at, at Sun 'n Fun, so we're super excited about having all of our, our friends coming back. What we've seen is, because we're kind of past, obviously, our pandemic period, where our vendors and exhibitors are coming back in, in big numbers. A big thing for us this year was, we have prepaid online parking. So when you see this and it says 50% off parking, if you show up and you didn't do it online, it's going to be 20 bucks. We need you to do it online to help get people into the parking lot as quickly as possible, and it's $10 when you do it online, because we have the technology now with the QR code. So when you come in, we're going to scan, you go immediately into parking. So we don't want anybody to pay $20. We want them to buy it online for 10, which has been 10 for a long, long time. Also, our flying style program, this is just geared towards our fly-in traffic, really, really focused on the fly-in community. There's new things we put in place. If you've been watching any of my videos or what's been going on, we have a new social hub for, called the Island out there, right in front of NOAA, where we'll have Frescos is going to be out there in 120 by 60 tent, breakfast, lunch, dinner. There's going to be Uber and Lyft drop-offs, there's going to be public Instacart deliveries you can get out there. A country store, we call it the Island Store, the Pilot Welcome Center, tram stops, so just a lot of activities and things put together for our flying community to make sure we can get our, our fly-in traffic and numbers back up. So we're very focused on our flying, our, our flying guests. Also this year during the event, kids 10 and under are free. Last year, it was six and under, but we want to make sure we get our kiddos in there. So 10 and under is free. And also this year, we have Junior ACES, which is our youth program. We have already over 2,000 field trip kids that are coming in, so they're each can be given passports, and there's various areas, whether it is the Florida Air Museum, it is our 727, it is Skylab, it is our career fair, various areas around the site that once they check off those passports. Also through Dayton Freight, one of our sponsors, and each kid that completes Junior ACES and goes to all these various sites will receive a toolkit, which is really cool, that they'll be able to get. So we're excited about the kiddos coming in. And that's available for any kid, not just someone that's coming in on a field trip, but any kids that attend the event this year. And then also on the first day, on Tuesday at 10:30 a.m., in partnership with Arrow News Network, we're doing our Sun 'n Fun Innovation Preview. So in the past, we've done, you know, media opportunities for the various companies that attend to do press briefings and whatnot. We are going to all do this on the first day at 10:30 a.m. in the pavilion that's attached to the Florida Air Museum and Skylab. And we already have 25 exhibitors and vendors that will be introducing and announcing new aircraft, new engines, new avionics, new things that they're selling at this event. So it's going to be very, very exciting. And we're looking forward to having all the media there right away on the first day, because we are the first, you know, big event for the year in aviation every year, and a lot of companies are excited to announce new opportunities and new, new aircraft at Sun 'n Fun this year. So getting ready to close up here, you know, we talked about a lot of new stuff, but you know, since I've been on board for a little over a year now, and actually had 12 years to watch the event and watch things, you know, there, and I had 30 days even before, you know, John Leanhouse left, my predecessor. So during the fly-in last year, I had a lot of time to go around and talk to our guests, talk to our visitors, talk to our vendors, and, and really listen and get their feedback. So we've been really laser-focused on the guest and visitor experience this year. If you've seen it, we have two new websites, one for ACE and then one for Sun 'n Fun this year, new ticketing system. So our ticket sales are about 40% over what they were this time last year. I don't know that means we're going to be record-breaking or anything like that. We've just made it super easy and convenient for people to be able to buy their tickets online. We talked about the Island, which we're, again, super excited about. Enhanced air shows and flying activities, so you will see, there's some things I can't even announce yet that are coming, because we just need that final confirmation, but there will be, it'll be quite exciting out there this year with our air shows. Also, our evening air shows with Wednesday night, we'll be doing a pyro musical, not fireworks, but pyro musical. And then Saturday night, we'll have our firework show, which will be tremendous and very much enhanced. I know everybody's like, eh, it's been great over the years. If you miss it, you're going to miss something very, very special. Also, we had talked about parking earlier with prepaid online parking. We also have a new overflow lot on the east side of the airport, in the southeast corner of the airport, you know, for our folks, because again, we want to be able to, on Friday and Saturday especially, get people off the roads and into parking as quickly as possible. We also hired a consultant to evaluate our parking, and they'll be on, on board with us during the event as well to help us manage the parking lots, again, to get people in as quickly as possible so they can enjoy the show. Another big thing for us is improved Wi-Fi. So we have just put in three, 30,000 linear feet of Cat 6 cable and hundreds of antennas out there everywhere. So if you see an antenna sticking out of the ground, don't touch it. But the, in the core area, for example, you know, we have 500 exhibitors and vendors who are looking to sell and transact business out there, and we need to help them make sure they can do that. In the core area around the exhibit buildings, we now have the capability for folks to have 29,000 simultaneous connections all at the same time. As we all know, we have iPhones, iWatches, iPads, they're all wanting to communicate and put, push data up to the cloud at all times. And so we have not been a great provider of that Wi-Fi over the last several years, but we're going to have, it's all set and ready to go. And so hopefully our vendors and exhibitors will be happy. We talked about the innovation preview, enhanced night air shows, and, you know, the big thing for us is, this is our 49th annual, next year is our 50th. And so a lot of these changes, a lot of these things we've been focused on this year, we want to get in place this year, because again, we're not perfect, but we're putting in perfect effort. But we want to be able to see these things and put them in place and tweak them and get ready for our 50th, because that's going to be a huge celebration for us, and we're super excited about. And, you know, again, a big kudos and shout-out and thank you to the city of Lakeland and to the Lake Linder International Airport for all the support over all of the years that you all have given us. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, this, there's so many layers of things in this presentation that it's easy to miss how incredibly outstanding this contribution is to our city and to our airport and to the nation. And your 12 years as a student, it's interesting, you take like, John Lighthouse, who has huge pilot experience and created kind of the first step wave of this for you in this last pass, and then you're non-piloted, you, you may not know this, but Gene does not have a pilot license, and he never has had, and that's a choice, so that he could run airports and, and he grew up in that environment. But then taking the practical steps of your skills as round two enhances all of this. And so when you think about what we just listened to, most cities would just be excited about any one of those slides. And here you have this on as layers, both on the educational side as well as on the experience for the community. A couple of questions, and, and so I'm very, very grateful, we are very, very grateful for that. The only, the 85% of the students that attempt to get pilot's license, what is typically the 15% fallout on that?
Some of it is just, you know, they start flying and they don't like it. Some of it is just a loss of mo, a loss of motivation. I mean, it's just a natural course of business. You know, again, I'm not a pilot. I mean, I get sad all the time.
You can't grip.
How can you, you know, I used to get asked, how can you run the airport and not be a pilot? I said, easy. You know, how can you run Sun 'n Fun and not be a pilot? Easy, because it just, I'm passionate and I love it, but I don't sit here and just, I want to go fly airplanes. I mean, I love logistics and operational things. And you know, when these kids get involved and they start doing the program, some, they're just, it's not the right fit, but it doesn't mean they don't love aviation.
Right.
Or they don't want to be a mechanic, or they don't want to be in air traffic control and all of that. It's just not the right fit for them.
Okay, so I think that's a good thing to, to describe, and I appreciate you doing that. And the fifth grade students that are coming from Polk County Schools, which is wonderful, are we having any of that fifth grade program in the private schools at all? Are we doing-
Yeah, so we do, we already do pri, we already do field trips for any of the private schools, any of the charter schools, anybody that wants to come out. We're doing that basically every, every single day right now. Skylab, our Innovation Center is, we're about 75% occup, or, you know, capacity right now. So we're doing field trips several a week already, so any schools, anywhere. We, these, these field trips specifically for the fifth graders, working with Mr. Hyde, the superintendent, this is the fifth grader's field trip for the year. But again, any school, any private school, any charter school, we take them all. All you got to do is call us.
And my last question is, on the videos that you referred to several times, where do our citizens find those?
They can find those on our social media page, our YouTube page, because I've been doing them, you know, once a month, and as we've gotten closer to the Sun 'n Fun Aerospace Expo every week now, just to keep all of our guests and everybody that's coming up to date on what's happening. And if I could say one more thing, too, you know, I think it's, it's, it's important for people to understand, especially in this community, everybody knows Sun 'n Fun. And, you know, a lot of folks, some folks don't come, or they sit on drain field or south side of the airport, and they enjoy it from afar. But we really encourage you to come in and see it as well, because a lot of the guests, obviously, are coming from all over the country and all over the world. But the net proceeds of what we do during the fly-in go into these educational programs that I just described. But these programs are for this community, they're for this region, right? We're not, these aren't nationwide programs, it's for our families and our kid, and our kids here in this community. So that's important.
Commissioner McCarley.
So the education part, I get really excited about, even though I love the Blue Angels. I think they're wonderful, too, and we always come out and visit. On the education piece, the CFAA and Winter Haven, is that linked with Winter Haven High School?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, that I think it's such a critical component, especially as we see more and more pilots, more and more aviation professionals aging out, and, and capturing young people, and I love the idea, 60 to 83-year-olds, stressed me out a little bit, like, kudos to you for having all them out there. That's a huge number for Storytime, but planting that seed early, I think, is really, really important. There are magnet schools that have places like Sun 'n Fun come out to schools and, and do like an enrichment program. I know Lincoln Avenue Academy always did fifth-grade enrichment activities. So having all the fifth graders throughout the county come is amazing, because I think it'll pique their awareness and their interest into that environment. And even if they don't go into it, it's just, it's a great educational tool. So kudos to you on Sun 'n Fun. And we had a great mayor's breakfast, which I got asked after, they're like, is it no longer the mayor's breakfast? Because you spoke. And I'm like, well, maybe we should have addressed that. The mayor was, was not here, so I stepped in. But it was a great morning, Amazon Air was great as keynote. Gene, as usual, did an amazing job sharing everything that's going on out at Sun 'n Fun and the Aerospace for Excellence and Lake Linder. So thank you for doing all of that. And finally, thank you for explaining the three, the umbrella organization and the two subsidiaries, because I do think that sometimes even, I don't know about everyone else, that helped me tremendously have that clarity in my mind of how they all are integrated. So thanks for doing that great presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, sorry.
Thank you.
Sir, I don't have a map for you this morning.
That's all right. I'll be out there seeing one soon enough. But again, I just want to shout out, you did a great job today, and it's been interesting for me to be on the ACE board. It's been a real eye-opener for me. And the component about, just want to notify our citizens, it's going to be a busy week, so you're going to be, some traffic issues you need to deal with. And of course, one thing that Gene has set up to take some of the traffic issues in place is, Publix is out there, and they're going to deliver food and stuff to the different vendors and our campers, so it will, it's going to take less traffic on the roads of that area. But I'm looking forward to a great event, and you'll probably see a lot of me this year, so.
This year.
Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gene. You go so fast and cover so much territory, and it's amazing. I tried to keep up, but there are a few things I need to ask for clarification. So one was when you said that you're doing a capital campaign for, and you said A and P?
Yes, the Airframe and Power Plant program.
Power?
Power plant.
Power plant, the engines.
So for aviation mechanics, aircraft mechanics.
Okay.
So airframe is the, the bird, and the power plant is the engine.
Okay.
And those are, and that applies to rides. Can you talk about that? That certification for working on rides?
Oh, yes. So, you know, again, we talked about kids, you know, as far as the pilot program or not having interest and want to move on to something else. But whether you're like Disney or Busch Gardens, for example, they require you to have an AMP license certified from the FAA to work on roller coasters and other rides as well. So you don't have to just be in aviation, but it's, it's a great skill, and that certificate is applied in many places.
Okay, that's awesome clarification, thank you. And then, let's see, my next one was with the network that you're setting up, with the antennas to be able to increase the Wi-Fi, thank you so much. I mean, that, every year, I'm kind of like, why do we not have Wi-Fi out here? But certainly, when you put it into reference 29,000 simultaneous connections, you know, that is quite a-
And that was in just that one area. So the whole campus, except there's, we couldn't get to the majority of the camping, but all the aircraft parking and camping areas and everywhere where people will congregate in the warbird ramp and various other viewing areas will all have Wi-Fi. So we want people to be able to share the story, too, of what a great time they're So we want people to be able to share the story too of what a great time they're having at the event on social media and post pictures and all that good stuff.
Okay, and are you able to share who's helping you do this? I know you mentioned you have a consultant coming to watch our parking, so we get it up to speed. I'm sure you're wanting to do the same thing this year, you know, for the big anniversary. Is this kind of a trial run with a particular antenna or vendor, or how is this happening?
No, actually, we hired, it's a company called Flatrate Geek and they're out of South Florida. And he, it's essentially him and a couple others, but they do events all over the state of Florida and especially South Florida. And they just put up Wi-Fi installations at large concerts and events. But our installation, some of it is remote and just put up, it'll be put up this week. But a lot of what, again, we've put in the ground with that 30,000 linear feet of CAT 6 cable, I mean, that's permanent installations in those antennas. Some of it's remote, but a lot of it's permanent, they'll be installed. But I just happened to fall into that through a personal friend, that he was an expert on it and he's done a fabulous job for us.
Awesome. I'd be really curious to see how that goes. Hopefully, it's everything that we have.
It better work.
I know. And then the, that's at least.
It's on already.
Year before, right?
It's on, it's on already. We all do, you can go out there and do tests, speed tests on it, and it's like 500 megabits per second download right now.
It's only when all those 29,000 devices are on it that the real test is.
Yes, we'll be ready.
And then last, I just want to say Eric did a great job. I went out and toured and he is effervescent and so passionate. And so I was hearing about the new pivot towards the younger children, which I agree with Commissioner McCarty, you know, it's been awesome to have the high school and then even kind of, you know, the flowery into middle school, but to get kids excited, the earlier the better about the opportu, you know, to get them into that workforce pipeline is amazing. So thank you for whoever, you know, instigated that new younger focus with those kids and the playground and all those things, I think it'll, it's storytime.
Actually, Eric, Eric and his wife, and you know, what's interesting too is all the development now is occurring in southwest Lakeland, south of the airport. That's a target-rich environment for us, right? You've got all those families, young families with kids, and we want to be that location for them to, you know, come and have a good time and learn about aviation.
It's exciting, thank you so much.
Mission music.
Yeah, I was just pivoting off of that a little bit, I would just trademark the cradle-to-cockpit because I thought that was something that stuck out. I had a question, when you go back to the, the students and you said that, what was it, 499 that you could have, you had 450 and then had to back it off because of teachers. Can you explain the, the teachers in what respect?
Well, just having them available and being able to hire them. You know, I, we don't run Polk County Public Schools, I mean, it's our building, but they run their program. But it's just, you know, just like any, any business out there right now, it's hard to find people and they just, we didn't have the teachers available to, to hit those numbers. But I think we'll be, we'll be ready this next school year.
And those teachers are hired by the Polk County School Board but come out and work at your facility?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner?
Just want to remind the citizens, on April 1st is the big air show that on, it'll be a real good exhibit that night to see everything going on that evening.
And you're not kidding.
Right.
And the event is March 28th through April 2nd, so tomorrow, we're one week out. One week out. And then also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my team out there and also the 2,500 volunteers that are with us year-round, early birds that we call them are with us for five or six months, and then our friends that come for 10 to 14 days. I mean, we couldn't get it done without them and they're all starting to arrive, so we're getting excited.
On the technical basis, one last question and, and really looking for your affirmation on whether or not this is factual. If people have unlimited cellular, they really shouldn't use the Wi-Fi on their phones because they, the cellular would be an access point that they can do through the cell system.
Well, cellular is always tricky because when you have the density of the people, you know, the cellular, it's having to hit the antennas and all of that. So having the Wi-Fi, it's just, if they come out, they can connect, it's free by the way, we're not charging for Wi-Fi. You'll just have a interface that you'll have to log into, whatnot to hit it. But it really, I mean, whatever works for them, we want to make it easy.
All right. Thank you very, very much for the presentation, for your leadership, for the next chapter in this history and for the excellent way in which you're pursuing it. It's a great fit.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
We have no proclamations today and we have a consent agenda and it is marked by the five items with asterisks. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion to approve and the consent agenda. Any discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by any members of the audience? All those in favor, signified by saying aye. Not opposed, same, unanimously passes. We have no requests to appear from the general public or an equalization hearing today, so that takes us right into our city attorney with public hearings under 3A1 ordinance's second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several ordinances for second reading and consideration of adoption this morning. The first is proposed ordinance number 23-004, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida relating to the Land Development Code, amending Article 2 use standards and Article 5 standards for specific uses of the Land Development Code to allow for the development of affordable, multi-family residential projects within certain non-residential zoning districts, subject to certain location criteria, development standards and an approval process, making findings, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
And a second. Discussion by commissioners or questions? Seeing none, any discussion by, or questions by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, so Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 23-011, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida relating to the Land Development Code, amending Article 2 use standards and Section 2.6 master use list to add public safety and security facilities, including police, fire, rescue and ambulance facilities as permitted uses under the general use category, utility and essential service facilities level one, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second discussion by commissioners? And there was good discussion on all of these at the agenda studies, so if there's any background questions anyone may have. Any discussion or questions by any members of the audience? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 23-012, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for small-scale amendment number LUS 22-009 to a certain portion of the future land use map of Lakeland Comprehensive Plan Our Community 2030, changing the future land use designation on approximately 3.53 acres located at 1205 Neville Avenue from residential medium RM to residential high RH, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move for approval.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And motion to approve and a second discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by members of the audience? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 23-013, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning from RA3, single-family residential, to PUD, planned unit development zoning, to allow an AD8 unit, multi-family residential development on approximately 3.53 acres located at 1205 Neville Avenue, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move for approval.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion by commissioners or questions? Any by the audience? Hearing is seeing none, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously, or passes, yes.
All right, the item number five on the agenda is, on the agenda for information only, this is the Harden Boulevard, proposed Harden Boulevard warehouse self-stores facility. The second reading on this will take place on April 3rd, and so no action will be taken on that today. Again, this is just for information only and additional notice to the public. That leads us to a couple of development agreements under B1 and B2. These are development agreements with Pipkin Creek Properties LLC and Prose Lakeland Owner LLC. They're both residential, proposed residential developments. One's a single-family residential development and another is a multi-family development. And they are both, together will generate the need for a traffic signal at South Parkway Frontage Road and Pipkin Creek Road. And we're required to hold a public hearing on each of those. Development agreements under state law require two public hearings, so this is the first of two public hearings, no action will be taken this morning. But Chuck does have a brief presentation for the commission.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Davis. And for the record, Chuck Barnby with the Community and Economic Development Department. As, as Mr. Davis said, these are two development agreements, separate development agreements relating to properties with, adjacent to each other within the, a previous single planned unit, planned unit development called Palm Springs. So the original PUD was adopted back in 2002 and included a mix of commercial, multi-family, single-family uses. And over time, that, that productivity evolved. The area that you see here is basically east of Pipkin Creek Road and south of, of South Parkway Frontage Road in the southwest portion of Lakeland. The Prose Alliance Multi-Family Development is the closest to the actual intersection in question. And then the Lakeside Preserve Single Family Development is south of it. And one of the things I want to note at this time is, is that in notices that went out, we did include a, a statement that the, the single-family portion or Lakeside Preserve would allow for a golf course. Golf course, back in 2019, PUD was modified to change the development plan to eliminate the golf course, but the language that allowed that golf course was not removed until the PUD was modified last year to allow for the multi-family up at the corner. So a golf course is not part of the development program, but we wanted to make sure that we were able to explain that in a linear fashion because of the relationship between the two PUDs that we're talking about today. Of course, this is part of the, the southwest sector of Lakeland. The property in question here is, right here on the far eastern portion of the, of the southwest sector. The commercial node there at the corner was removed last year and replaced with 120 multi-family units. The rest of the, the portion of the project, in addition to the multi-family, is consistent with the sector plan, single-family, and the intent to, to preserve as much of the canopy and the character of Pipkin Creek Road as possible. That's a, that's a roadway that is owned and operated by Polk County, so anything that happens on that facility is, is required to be approved by them. But we also want to make sure that the character of the, of the neighborhoods abiding Pipkin Creek Road definitely support that canopy road designation. And this is part, also within our urban development area as identified in the comprehensive plan. So in general, the roadway level of service standards out here are level service standards One notable exception that's applicable here is Drainfield Road. Drainfield Road in our comprehensive plan is designated a constrained, constrained roadway because of its proximity to the Polk Parkway, the parallel multi-lane toll facility that, you know, outside of operational transit, bicycle pedestrian improvements, the comprehensive plan prohibits or prevents the widening of, of Drainfield Road to four lanes, the, the addition of through lanes. The, we, we really want to focus in on operational improvements and multimodal improvements to move people within the corridor because of the proximity to the Polk Parkway. And it's important to note that DOT has a, a roundabout this program for construction next year at the intersection of Drainfield Road and Waring Road. That's going to be a very substantial improvement. DOT is also resurfacing Drainfield Road to, all the way from Airport to Pipkin Creek Road. So to this, to this actual intersection we'll be talking about, to the development agreement, as part of that project, they'll be adding medians east of Waring Road as well as transit stop improvements along that corridor as well. So there's a lot that's happening in Drainfield to support a complete street treatment for this, for this area. The traffic analysis was conducted by Elizabeth Rodriguez and Associates out of, out of the Tampa Bay area and was really conducted for both, you know, for, for, for each development, Prose Lakeland and Lakeside Preserve separately, but also cumulatively to come up with the, the proportional shares that the agreements will address for the, for the signalization of Pipkin Creek Road and Drainfield Road. The cost estimates and a conceptual design was also developed at the behest of Pipkin Creek Properties or the Lakeside Preserve developers for that intersection to give us a basis from which to develop cost estimates, proportional share and a project that we can then move forward as, as the city, you know, if the agreements are approved by the city commission. The signalization cost was estimated at, at just under $550,000. Those are in year 27 dollars, just because of the time it would take to analyze, come up with the actual improvement need, go through the permitting with the county and DOT and, and get the supplies to be able to construct the signal. We just didn't see it happening within, with, you know, until about five years from now. So we want to make sure that the costs reflected that. It's also important to note too is, is that because this intersection is operated by the county, Pipkin Creek Road and, and DOT Drainfield Road, they may want to see something else at this location, so the dollar amount is focused on a traffic signal, but there may be other elements that fit within that $550,000 box that we would then, you know, use, use that money for to address the congestion issues that are expected at this, at this intersection. It's also important to note too that it's, it's really an access improvement to the developments. It's not a concurrency issue, it's an access issue. And so the, the improvements and the, and the contributions from the, from the two developers are not impact fee credit eligible. So I wanted to go ahead and state that as well, and that's something that's noted, noted in the agreement. Spoke earlier about the improvements that are actually funded for construction in the surrounding area. And of course, Pipkin Road to the south is under construction, will be under construction until 2024. In terms of the two specific agreements, Pipkin Creek Properties is the Lakeside Preserve Development. Their full build-out is 426 single-family dwelling units. 135 have been constructed as part of Phase 1. We're in the process now of reviewing Phase 2, which consists of 267 lots, and have already approved 22 additional lots in Phase 2A. So they're well on their way towards that next, that next phase, which would complete the, complete the project. The last major modification was in 2019 and, and it's worth noting that PUD allows for 461 single-family units. So even a build-out through this development agreement, they're going to be less than, than what's, than what's allowed in the PUD. At the bottom left, you can see the general layout that's under review by city staff at this point in time. And, and most of, most of the conservation wooded areas around the eastern and southern sides of the site are going to remain. Those are the former mine lands and so those are, those are going to remain and those are kind of encircling the proposed lots that you see here on the screen. In terms of Lakeside Preserve's proportional contribution to the project, the development agreement would require a payment of $363,570.29. And then we have other requirements within the development agreement as well. It, it addresses the, the timing of those payments, once at construction plan approval, another in full payment at the notice of commencement. It would vest the project for approximately 4,100 daily trips, 429 peak hour trips, which we look at for concurrency purposes, and it has no expiration following full payment. So that will just, because of the, the planning and subdivision process and nature of the project, once they make their, once they make their payment, you know, we want to make sure that they're good to go to, to, to full build-out, which is still below what is allowed in the PUD. So to the north, we have, again, Prose Lakeland, which is the multi-family development. A PUD modification last year by the, by the city commission eliminated about, I guess that was about seven or eight acres here on the corner of commercial and office uses and, and in turn replaced that with 120 multi-family units to have a cumulative 391 multi-family unit project. The, the development is on 22.87 acres and, and was once part of the larger Lakeside Preserve development, but was then with this 22, 2022 amendment, was brought out into its own separate PUD, PUD 5931. With this one, it is, it, it, this project will not be going through our subdivision review process, it will be going through a site plan review process. The site plan is very close to being approved for the 391 units and so everything is being done consistent with the, with the, with the zoning. With this, through this agreement, the, you know, really the development is required to, to pay, you know, full cost of $186,263.49. That money, my understanding is, is already in an escrow account and is ready to be paid upon the approval of the development agreement. So that financial guarantee is in place, it's just now waiting the full final payment according to the terms of the, of the agreement. The project would also be required to put a transit stop on its Pipkin Creek Road frontage as well as install a sidewalk along Pipkin Creek Road as well. Pipkin Creek Road was, was formerly called South Pipkin Road and so going, if you look back through some of the old PUD documents and some of the old roadway plans, there it was called South Pipkin Road. So that's why for folks that have been around a while, there's some differences in the names here, but the road now, now is called Pipkin Creek Road. Through the Prose Lakeland Development Agreement, approval would grant, approval and payment would grant vesting for 2,862 daily and 219 peak hour trips. There would be an expiration date of, of December 31st, 2027, if a building permit has not been received within 356, 365 days of the effective date. Know that the, the building permit and the building plans are under review right now for all of the buildings within this development, so we're very comfortable that this condition will be met easily. The city would issue a refund if the improvements are, have not commenced by 2035. So that's one where we would provide a refund if the project, if, if this doesn't, this doesn't actually move, you know, move towards, towards construction. The agreement also includes a section in there about a separate impact fee credit arrangement that has been made with the parties related to the former West Lakeland Development Regional Impact. And so you can see on the screen there the two assignments of those credits. And so what that leads to in terms of an impact fee payment, just city transportation impact fees, once you take the assigned credits for Prose, we're down to 469,396, and that would be the net impact fee payment that would be expected for city transportation impact fees. For Pipkin Creek Properties or Lakeside Preserve, we're 1.2, almost 1.25 million dollars in terms of city transportation impact fee payments for that. That's based on the current impact fee schedules. Those schedules are subject to change with future impact fee study updates and changes to the fee schedules that happen over time. And again, this is just noting that this agreement does not issue credits for these intersection improvements at Pipkin Creek Road and Drainfield Road. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I believe representatives from Prose Lakeland are in the audience and possibly from Lakeside Preserve as well, and there may be others that have questions about the project.
Commissioner McCrley.
I have questions. Chuck, early on in the presentation, you had a list of all those roads, you had a red box around the Drainfield one? Okay, so I think it's really important for the public to understand that because of the DOT decisions and structure of how they approve roads or approve widening of roads, if it's concurrently against the Polk Parkway, what you're saying is our hands are tied, basically?
This was a local decision, but a local decision that was made probably 20, 25 years ago. Once the Parkway was getting, was nearing completion, we've always had congestion to some underground Drainfield Road. The concern was is that, you know, and this is more from the city and from the county, frankly, is that we would come back and request a four-lane of Drainfield Road at some point in time, and it was just, particularly as you get further east on Drainfield, with having a brand-new four-lane expressway just to the north, we felt it was prudent, you know, to the taxpayer and to the motor and public to say, we're not going to put that on the list for a four-lane project. And so by making it a constrained facility, what we're saying is, is we're not going to, the Drainfield would be allowed to go above the roadway capacity, but we would also focus on making operational improvements and transit bicycle pedestrian improvements over time to make that corridor a true urban corridor. So it was really to make sure that we took the taxpayers' dollars and focused it where it was most beneficial and not just adding lanes when you've got a toll road immediately next to it.
So the anticipation of all the growth out by the airport really wasn't included in that decision?
It was. Southwest Lakeland has been a growth sector for quite some time. It's just, it's all happening very quickly, I mean, it's all happening really at one time. But it's been something that we've been keeping an eye on for a long time, and that was one of the big reasons why the Polk Parkway was built.
And so the impact on Waring, just because, you know, as we think about that being a connector, you know, how is that going to impact Waring? Because I know we've worked with DOT and we've tried to get that on the priority list to widen that, does that impact that as well?
Actually, let's get back to this. Waring is really its own separate category, and so none of this affects Waring at all. And in fact, we've got a, we received a prop share payment from Riverstone for Waring Road from Drainfield down to Pipkin Road, and this was about four or five years ago. We still have those dollars and are going to start moving forward towards a design phase of that project. The roundabout that is about to go to construction by DOT anticipates Waring Road being four-lane to the south. And so everything is being put together to make Waring Road the main north-south corridor in that whole area.
Well, I mean, it's theoretical that it's not impactful, but in the data implementation of driving, it is very impactful. We just need to be aware of that. And then when you fast forward to the reimbursements that you talked about for 12, 31, 35?
Yes.
So if that doesn't come to fruition, is that market rate at that time, or is that just based on how much it is now?
It would be, let me make sure, there we go. It would be whatever is paid into the account, there would be no growth rate, no additional. That's the intent is, is that if you're paying this amount and we're refunding it, we're going to refund exactly what you paid in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, thank you, Chuck. The roundabout, I guess we're almost finished with the roundabout currently in front of the airport, and this one will start in '24?
Yes, sir.
Will it take another nine months or so as well?
It's a much bigger roundabout, so I don't know exactly a construction duration, but it will be, I would suspect, well over a year. But it's going to be our, probably our first multi-lane roundabout in the city of Lakeland. Because of the amount of traffic that goes through there, it's going to be a big one.
Also, on the Pipkin Creek, on the 426 single-family lots, approximately what size will they be?
Oh, that's a good question. I think most of them that I've seen at this point are in the 50s and 60s.
And about 120-foot depth, something like that?
Something like that.
And then what is our current level of service on that road? Can you tell me that?
On Pipkin Creek?
Well, I guess the general area would have gone to do with the lights and stuff, yes. Because I know we're getting ready to take, we're getting ready to tie up 6,800 trips for these folks, and they're going to be vested, and they're going to be off the market per se, so what is it now versus what do you think it will be at that point?
Right now, we're somewhere between D and E, probably closer to E on Drainfield. On Pipkin Creek Road, we're not tracking concurrency on that because of the completion of South Pipkin Road through Parker Corporate Center. That became the collector road, and so that moved the through traffic over, one road over from Pipkin Creek Road. So Pipkin Creek is really a local, is really a local road for concurrency tracking purposes.
But we're beyond F on Drainfield, you're saying? Is that?
I'd say probably close to level service E at this point.
I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Music.
It was interesting, this morning, I was heading to my office, which is right on Drainfield, and at Waring Road, where we're talking about the roundabout, I was heading south and had to wait through three traffic lights. It wouldn't, I mean, that was actually the second car, and it wouldn't trigger. And so eventually it did. But when we look at Drainfield and what Commissioner McCrley was talking about with the widening and the things of that nature, do we have the ability to do, because I know a lot of it is two-lane with a turn? Do we have the room all the way down to make sure in the future we could do two with a turn? Because I know some areas still are just two-lane. Or are we restricted at this point? It is what it is?
I think at this point, it's probably safe to say that it is what it is, because we've got some right-of-way constraints at this, you know, as you approach Pipkin Creek Road, the right-of-way narrows down by the Marathon Station.
Yes.
And then as you get west of Waring Road by Maurice's Towing, there's a, it necks down and through there as well.
Just a two-lane, yep.
And so we've asked DOT over the past several years, as they started to scope out the resurfacing project, could we get a metal turn lane, you know, even going west of Waring towards Don Emerson? And that was the choke point. So we've got a couple of spots where the right-of-way really does neck down each end of the corridor. Not to say that we couldn't go after and get turn lane, you know, get funding for turn lanes and those types of improvements, and we would keep an eye for opportunities to do that. There's just down at, down towards Pipkin Creek, there are a lot of utilities in that area as well that we'd have to contend with.
Got a question.
Yes, Commissioner, send it.
Chuck, how are impact fee credits generated?
Impact fees are generated based on generally how much, you know, how much an improvement costs and how much capacity is consumed by the development. So, you know, but in this instance here, this credit arrangement goes back to probably right around 1990, 1991. This was all tied to the right-of-way dedication for the Polk Parkway by the West Lakeland Land Development Company. And so they had a development regional impact that included this site and all the way down to Airport Road and beyond. And so over, you know, over the past 20-plus years, we've been willing down the different credit accounts related to the West Lakeland DRI. And so this is a final part of that puzzle. So those are all based on the dedication of the land to the county, to the state related to the Polk Parkway.
Generally speaking, it's the incremental impact of that development that creates Other question to comment. And again, kind of reiterate why we are having to do these two hearings.
Sure. State law requires that you hold two public hearings prior to adoption of a development agreement. So we just heard from Chuck, and he gave a, you know, presentation that applied to both of them, but procedurally, this morning, we actually need to open each of these items up for public comment, so I would just ask that you take B1 and B2 separately.
All right.
And open up for public comment.
So let's take B1, and then for those of you who are in the audience that may want to make a comment, this would be the, related to the Pipkin Creek Properties LLC. Is there anyone who would like to, please come up to the center podium, sir, and just limit your comments to three minutes? State your name and address, that'd be great.
I'm David Pendry, I'm a resident of Lakeside Preserve. We have signed the contract over four years ago, and we are currently waiting for the Phase 2 pavilion and hiking trails that were promised when we purchased out there. Currently, at Parkway and Parkway Frontiers Road and Pipkin Creek Road, during people going to work time, the traffic backs up because there is no left turn or right turn, it's one common lane. If they're talking about putting a traffic light in there, there needs to be a left turn and a right turn at that intersection, or else you talk about going through several light changes. That would go through several light changes because you're talking about doubling the amount of traffic that's on that road when all of these other properties get in there. But now's the time to be talking left and right turn lane at that intersection, because once the developments are there, then you can't get it.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Chuck, any comment on that, by the way?
That has been an issue that we've discussed with both county and DOT. Really, in terms of the, from the technical review, the traffic signal would solve the issue, but we have the right-of-way to add a turn lane should one be needed in the future.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Commissioner Reed.
Chuck, in reference to his first comment, in their development order, they have to provide these different services, does that hold up or anything else? What do they do about that? If their clubhouse hasn't been built and they haven't put in a pool or stuff like that?
Well, we're actually reviewing the amenity center right now as part of the Phase 2 construction plans, and so all that is laid out. I'm trying to remember if it has a pool or not, I'll go back and I'll double-check for the next hearing. And then the trail system is something that we haven't seen a whole lot of detail on, and so we'll push the developer on that as well. But that was, that's all in the conservation area along the east side of the, east side of the site. But the amenity center and the layout of that is in the construction plan package for Phase 2.
So once they complete that, then they can go forward to Phase 3 and do the other projects?
Really, Phase 3 is, it's a minimal number of lots, and so what we're looking at here is pretty much buildout. I don't know if the applicant is here for Lakeside Preserve, but this will pretty much build out the project. And so we want to make sure that whatever was committed to in terms of the trails are included in the construction plans.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, sir. Please just state your name and address in three minutes, thank you.
Good morning, my name is John Allsweet, I'm a resident of Lakeside Preserve. We purchased a new home there in 2020. My only concern is that, well, of course, is the traffic, but it sounds like that's being addressed hopefully adequately, are fees. We bought in the subdivision with expectations of a certain dollar amount for homeowner fees and CDD fees. How will this expansion of our subdivision impact what we pay every month?
Well, I think that's going to be a homeowners association issue only, correct?
That's correct, that's a private issue.
So what the homeowners association would decide on, that's not something we regulate.
Yeah, currently, we have a homeowners association, but it is managed and controlled by, I think, Highland Homes, if I'm not mistaken. And I understand that until the development is completely built out, we don't have a homeowners association with representatives on the board that are residents of the development. So I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but I don't know how, when it all would come together.
What you stated is correct, and that's a matter of state statute that says that once, I think it's 90% is the threshold, and once you, 90% of the lots are sold, then the residents then take control of the homeowners association, but until then, it's just developer-controlled.
That's what you really wanted to know was right there, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't help you, but that's.
We don't really have control over the fees, they could become anything.
Right. Yes.
And that's my concern.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right, good to have on record, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Please come on down, thank you.
Good morning, my name's Tom Rousch of Ben's Dad. Got four questions for clarification, the timing of Phase 3, that's a little toe that, by the way, I live at 1650 Birchwood Loop, which is in Collinades, which butts that Phase 3 section, the timing of that. The placement of the 17 lots concerns me, you know, it's just a small little plot that butts our neighborhood with that huge acreage. Why in the world they're trying to cram 17 homes into that little toe of property is beyond me. It appears that they're going to be right on top of our homes. Third concern is drainage, our backyard, during the rainy season, half of the backyard, you know, fills up with water. I'm afraid if they raise the elevation to put those homes in, our whole backyard's going to be a lake. And then the fourth one is, when they clear the land, are they going to burn or are they going to chip? Because after watching this development up by the railroad tracks with them burning that wood for two months, I think it's an environmental concern to all of us.
Good points to raise, and can be part of the discussions?
And I'll follow up with the development team on those points. I believe Phase 3 is only seven lots in the latest plan, but we'll nail that down as well.
That's a big difference. So seven versus 17 would be dramatic, okay. Was it planted for 17?
It was, I think it was planned in terms of the 2019 amendment, I think it was only seven.
Okay.
We haven't seen a plat or construction plans on that phase at all, so that's definitely down the road.
Commissioner McCrley.
So Chuck, while you're standing there, on the issue of the water, did they have mitigation credits that they bought to build on that? Because it is a low-lying area, so how did the ecology of it all and the fact that it's kind of, did they bring in filter to build that up, or the drainage components are a big deal because it looks low-level to me?
And I think Mr. Lewis may be here from the developer, and he can address it probably better than I can, but a lot of this area was previously mined, and so there may be some moving of dirt to raise the lots to be able to make the drainage work for the actual neighborhoods. But in terms of, everything's being engineered, Hunter Engineering out of Lake Wales is doing the design work for the development, so it's going through our full review as well as status with mine.
And is something that we will keep an eye on to see what's happening?
Absolutely.
I just think as a commissioner, we need to be aware of that, because even though you have developers come in and buy mitigation credits so that they can build and build up in different land areas, you know, as Florida continues to grow, we're obviously going to build more and more, probably in areas that might have originally been low-lying. And so we have to be very cognizant of that because the environmental impacts are huge. But also, for people who come from out of state and maybe buy in that area, or they're not from the area and they come from other parts of Florida and buy in an area, if it was ever wet, it's going to be wet during the rainy season. So it's just something, I know it happens a lot in Osceola County and a lot of the places that grew rapidly, you know, in the early 2000s and late 90s. And so that's not always explained, just like the HOA outlines are not always explained by the developer. So I think that's a critical component for us to consider when we, as a commissioner, are making these land use changes.
And we can have some of that information available, or have the applicant explain some of that information at the next hearing as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Music, did you have something?
I did not, I was just going to repeat that, so it's good, yes.
All good. Any other questions or comments by the audience, members of the audience? Okay, then let's take the second one, B2, Development Agreement with Prose Lakeland Owners LLC. Yes, sir. Just please just state your name, and are you on one or two in this comment? Are you doing the Pipkin Creek or Prose Lakeland?
Lakeside Preserve, Alberto Ramirez. In 2020, as all my neighbors notify, we were promised about this nature trail or hiking trail. It seems like we never get a clear answer when this is going to be done. The other question that I have is about the wood area, that is not going to be impacted by these new. area that is not going to be impacted by these new developments.
All right. Chuck, did you understand that question?
We'll certainly work with the developer to come up with a more definitive timeline on the nature trails for the next hearing. And in terms of the wooded areas, let me-
They'll stay wooded?
So, the lots that are currently under review are more in the central portion of this 428-acre tract. The wooded areas along the eastern and southern portions right now look to be untouched. So, that's as of the plans we're reviewing at this point in time.
Those woods remain the same as of the plans today?
Correct.
Does that answer your question, sir? Thank you.
But we'll confirm that as well. We'll make sure that we lay everything out for the next hearing.
Any other questions on that Item One, or comments? All right, then we'll move to Item Two, which is in the Prose Lakeland Owner LLC. Any comments on that? Okay. If you have some, sort of separate issue, come on up. Love to have you do them again.
David Pendry, Lakeside Preserve, 1560 Hollow Tree Court. Some of the last discussions between these two developments was the, there had to be another exit out of that development, into our development, and there was discussions back and to between Lakeside Preserve and this other developer. Has that been completed as far as?
Not at this point. There's a separate agreement that has to be executed between Prose and Lakeside Preserve. And Mr. Pendry, you're absolutely correct in terms of their connection has to be made. The issue at this point is, is what kind of connection can it and would it be? And I'll use my pointer again. The Prose is right now working with the county to get a permit for its driveway connection on Pipkin Creek Road. So, if it's a full movement access point, if that's allowed by Polk County, then the connection to Lakeside Preserve can be an emergency-only and a pedestrian access. If this is, this ends up being a ride-in, ride-out, or something less than a full movement access as determined by the county, then there's going to need to be vehicular access between the two. And I know the, you know, the two parties at this point really aren't, I don't think they're in complete agreement on that language, you know. And so, that's something that we're trying to work through on a parallel track. But that cross-connection, some type of cross-connection is going to be very important between these two residential communities.
Okay. So, it's pending.
One other question. The fact of Pipkin Creek is the division line between the county and the city of Lakeland. Has there been any movement towards annexation of properties to the west of Pipkin Creek? You cannot believe how difficult it is because Pipkin Creek is county road, but yet if people park on the right-of-way on Lakeside Preserve at the entrance there, they were parking trailers and cars and all this stuff, it took about six months to be able to get approval from the county traffic folks to put up no parking signs at the entrance to Lakeside Preserve, because when people came out to the roadway there at Pipkin Creek, it created a sight-distance thing with all of these vehicles parked out on the edge of the road. So, I would urge you guys to pursue going that way, because it creates all these difficulties when you're talking county, city. Who do you call? Do you call the Lakeland Police? Do you call the Sheriff's Department?
Gotcha. Good input, and something we can keep an eye on, and agree with you, and even work more closely with the county, too, as we go forward on that.
Okay. Well, see, it had to be approved by the Polk County Commission to put those signs up, and then they ran out of signposts because the hurricane had created a shortage of signposts. So, then, just crazy.
Understand.
Thank you.
That's very frustrating, and I understand your concerns.
And that area to the west of Pipkin Creek Road was actually part of an annexation referendum in, I think it was 2002. Didn't pass, but that was the last time the city made a concerted effort to annex that area. But because of the residential units over there, we'd have to go to referendum, and that's what failed last time.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Reed?
Chuck, on the first map, can you show me where the railroad tracks are on the first single-family residence?
Sure. Let me go to the overhead. So, the rail line-
To the south, yeah. Where's the DK Horton site? Is that it? Is that the old DK Horton site?
DR Horton is off the screen over to the left.
I thought they had one up on the airport by the railroad track, south of Parkway.
They've got, DR Horton's bought lots within Riverstone and Hawthorne Ranch, which Hawthorne is being developed by Forestar, which is owned by DR Horton. So, DR Horton definitely has a presence around other areas south of Drainfield Road, but their Lakeside Laurel Highlands development is northwest of here by probably a mile.
And Southern Homes is doing the one to the south.
Which one?
Southern Homes.
Southern Homes, they're doing Gresham Village.
That's out way out west.
Way out west. But Riverstone is being done by several builders. I think it's La Fresca, DR Horton, KB, I think it may-
Building the single-family homes down here on this piece. What a-
I think Highland was the primary developer before, but I don't think that they've got a developer selected for these, for the 289 lots that are coming forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Just to make the announcement, these will come back for a second public hearing on April 3rd in consideration of adoption.
All right. Thank you very much for that. We do not have a community redevelopment agency discussion, so we will move our comments to City Manager 5A.
Good morning. I have just one item for presentation this morning. It's regarding a recommendation for the award of bid number 3060 to JCR Construction. This would be for repair of interior office space at Lakeland Linder International Airport, and the repairs are associated with damages that were caused by Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. For this particular work, the city received four different bids, and this would include the installation of insulation, drywall, carpets, overhead lights, painting, ceiling tiles, cabinets, countertops, and a kitchenette. Of the four bids received, JCR Construction and Services was selected as the lowest and most responsive bidder, and the amount of $78,413.05. And these repairs can be charged to the Hurricane Ian FEMA account because of the related damages that occurred. So, it's recommended that the commission authorize city officials to enter into a contract with JCR Construction and Services as presented, and there are no additional appropriations that are required to support this request.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Commissioner Musick, and discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by members of the audience? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That is that, and the other's been the consent, so that takes us to 6B resolutions from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three resolutions for consideration of adoption this morning. The first is Propose Resolution Number 23-014, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, for an authorizing the lease purchase of one new Elgin Broom Bear Sweeper and five new Elgin Whirlwind Sweepers and related maintenance services for such equipment to maintain city streets in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,552,727, awarding the lease financing of such equipment to leasing to Inc. In accordance with the terms set forth herein, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute any documents and take any actions required in connection with the lease purchase agreement provided an effective date.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve in a second, and we had a good discussion on this on Friday with respect to the uniqueness of these machines and the ability to have a backup unit in the event that they're out of service for a prolonged period of time, which is part of the reason for lease purchase consideration versus purchase outright. So, is there any discussion by commissioners, additional discussion, or any questions or discussion by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes.
Next is Propose Resolution Number 23-015, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, authorizing execution of an agreement for the subordination of city utility interests located at State Road 400, which is I-4, parcel 102.2, making findings, providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Madden. Discussion. Seeing none, any discussion or questions by the audience? This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Item Three.
Item Three is Propose Resolution Number 23-016, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, authorizing execution of an agreement for the subordination of city utility interests located at State Road 400, which again is I-4, and State Road 33, parcel 113.2, making findings, providing an effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the members of the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes.
We have a couple of miscellaneous items for consideration. One is related to the resolution you just adopted on the street sweeper equipment. Ramona's going to present.
Good morning. Ramona Sireani for the City Attorney's Office. Welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The corresponding agreement that we have, the equipment lease purchase agreement for the Elgin Street Sweepers and also related maintenance services with Environmental Products Group, Inc., this is for the lease purchase of six new Elgin Whirlwind Street Sweepers. They are being procured through Environmental Products and then financed through leasing to Inc. The current lease that we have for the Street Sweepers does not expire till September of 2024 this year. However, due to the long lead time with requiring, getting this agreement, the equipment ordered, we are requesting approval of this lease agreement. It's a four-year lease deal with an interest rate of 4.45%. The cost of, the principal cost to purchase the equipment is $2,192,727, and then there are related maintenance services that will also be included in the finance purchase, which maintenance costs are $360,000 over the term of the lease. And this is, as you mentioned, very specific, highly technical maintenance services that are required, and the ability to have loaner equipment if there is an issue with equipment for more than a five-day purchase. So, based on the total cost of the maintenance and the equipment services, the total cost to finance the equipment and maintenance repair costs over the four-year term is $2,878,638.08, and this would be funded annually by the Stormwater Utility Fund, and we would ask for your favorable approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Comments by commissioners or questions? Commissioner Musick.
I just actually have a generic question about the street sweeping as it happens. Where do they go and dump these things and clean them? I mean, we see our roads all. Does anybody have a quick answer? Maybe we can get back on that. I just, you know, we see it crud, right? They come by, it's clean, and at some point, they've got to get rid of it. But I'm just curious on the mechanisms of that. So, at some point, that would be a neat-
No, that's a good question. And also, the scheduling of, they do scheduling based on the tonnage they pick up. So, those areas are more frequent, areas that are less frequent don't get hit as often. Mr. Brosart has some-
I think Mr. Charass had leaned in first.
Okay. I did look to my right.
Between the two of us, we can probably put together an answer here. I know that, I don't know that all of it is directly disposed of. I do know that a bulk of it goes into basically kind of a lay-down lot and then is collected and disposed of from that location, which is one of our Public Works facilities. There may be some of it that's directly disposed of, but I know a bulk of it goes to a lay-down lot and then is moved from there. That's exactly right. We had a chance to, through the Big Brothers Big Sisters, a couple times ago, talked to the folks that run the street sweepers, and that, one of the kids asked that very question. And so, what they do is they will drop it off at construction and maintenance, and then eventually, it will, much of it goes taken to the landfill is how it operates.
So, the short trip is construction and maintenance so that they can get back on the street again.
And they cover, they cover the city, I think, four times, four times a year. Every place is hit four times a year, I think is what they said.
Okay.
They're always running.
Commissioner Reed?
I'm going to ask a technical question. Do we know about how many cubic yards they care, how old?
How, I'm sorry.
Cubic yards?
That the sweepers hold?
Yeah.
We can get those specs.
I guess they grind it up and pack it, because your leaves are-
Slightly less than a garbage truck. I remember that reference between the two, but I can't tell exactly how many cubic yards it was. But I remember it was, thinking about it, it was slightly less than what a garbage truck would hold.
And it is all measured, and it's measured annually, so they know. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Any comments or questions by the audience and all members? All right. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Also unanimously passes. Brings us to Item Three.
Yes, we have an agreement with Kaminga and Ruivitz, Inc., for Griffin Road gravity sewer line replacement. This is Phase Two of the project. If you recall, back in, on March 6th, the City Commission approved another agreement with Kaminga and Ruivitz for about 1,600 feet of sewer line replacement, where the iron pipe was being replaced with the PVC pipe. And in this case, this is Phase Two of that project, which deals with about 600 feet. The work area for this phase is located along Griffin Road at the intersection of Pyramid Parkway and US 98 North. Due to the emergency nature of this work and the need to get this done rather quickly, Water Utilities went out, solicited five contractors, and received two responses back from quotes. Kaminga and Ruivitz was selected as a most responsible proposal with a total evaluated cost of $1,978,600. Once the City Commission approves and a notice receipt is issued, the work will be completed within 120 calendar days. One of the things I think you discussed on Friday at the agenda study was being able to make sure that all that equipment and machines get mobilized, and they won't start actually commence that work until all of that stuff is in place. So, we would ask for your favorable approval.
Move for approval. Second.
And the second by Commissioner Madden. Discussion by commissioners. Really appreciated the input you provided, Robbie, on this on Friday. And it's complicated and interesting, too, that the clay pipes are better, you know, over time as we go along. All right. Any questions or discussion by members of the audience? If none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Excuse me. There are no other items, so that allows us to have open audience comments on any topics that you would like to discuss, if they are undiscussed at this point. All right. And that brings us then to mayor and members of city commission. Commissioner McCarty.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the city team, especially Carol and most especially Tracy. While the mayor was gone, I stepped into doing a lot of the things that you are fortunate to do, and we're glad that you're able to be away and to rest. But Carol and Tracy specifically really helped me out a lot, and I just want to give them kudos. They always do a great job and worked with my schedule when I needed to come in and sign some stuff. And so, I really, really appreciate them, and just wanted to say that publicly. Also, I'm so glad that Gene did a Sun 'n Fun presentation today. I thought that was great, and I'm glad we had such a good discussion about that in general, especially since that event does cover and pour right back into the education components of our community that's so important. And now, we know that it goes even younger than high school, which I really appreciate. And now we know that it goes even younger than high school, which I really appreciate. And then finally, the last thing I want to say or talk about is I was able to go to the Polk Theater on Saturday night and watch Path of the Panther. This is a wonderful documentary. It's been done by National Geographic in partnership with Carlton Ward Jr., who is a native Floridian who is working really closely with Conservation Florida and some other groups to protect the Florida Panther and to look at how we develop the state of Florida and the impacts of the wildlife corridors and why they're so important. So when we're talking about what we had just discussed with some of these issues that we even see in planning and development of our own community, we have to be cognizant of what our environmental impacts are. So last year, I guess, well, two years ago, in the Florida Senate, there was a big push and through the governor's office to have new roadways done, three new toll roads through the state of Florida. Those got ratcheted back so we could look at wildlife corridors. What's, one of the problems is, is not so much, it's not really an environmentalist issue, it's a conservation issue. So we have to be really careful, not only with our water, but with our land. And I think this is, I would just highly recommend that if you get an opportunity, I emailed this to Kevin or texted him, I know, I'm...
I can't email.
That's okay. I shot it to you, I mean, just for later. I sent it to Kevin, this is, you can do a QR code on this and how to advocate, but I highly recommend the movie. There were so many people there. Tom and Celeste Deardorff were there in the audience. Terry Brigham and his wife were there in the audience. Those are just a couple of people who have worked in and around the city of Lakeland and in planning for years, but it was a great turnout on Saturday night. There was a panel discussion afterwards. Blair Updike was there from Forever Polk, that referendum that passed to protect our conservation of lands. And one thing that people don't necessarily think about is we can set aside funds to protect our land and half-state lands, but we also need operating and maintenance of those lands. So it might sound good to purchase all this land and all this property to protect it throughout the state of Florida, which we need to do just for future generations and really for water supply and lots of other environmental impacts. But we also need to be sure that we're maintaining those lands and that we're being good stewards of them. So I highly recommend this National Geographic movie. It is an hour and a half. It is beautifully shot. Carlton Ward Jr. is from the Heartland. He grew up, he is a photographer, he's an artist, and it is just an incredible, incredible work of art. And if you grew up in the woods like I did here in Polk County and wandering around orange groves and cattle pastures and also in the scrub, you will look at that movie and watch it and be mesmerized by the animals and the bears and Panthers and all the different things that we never see anymore because we're growing so substantially. So I am not necessarily viewed as an environmentalist, however, I love Florida, I'm a sixth-generation native, and I just think that we have to be very cautious because we can never get this land back, and we can never get these animals back. So it's a wonderful opportunity. It was a great collection of people, and it was just a beautifully, beautifully done film. I highly, highly recommend it. They want to get it in every school. So Jean's presentation with Sun 'n Fun was really prophetic to me in that if we could get as many young people in elementary, middle, and high school to watch this, as well as our state university system, I think it would be really helpful for the long-range planning and how we develop our, how we welcome people into the state of Florida and how we encourage people to come here, and we're happy to have new residents, but we also have to do that concurrently with protecting what's here, and we don't want to lose it.
Excellent comments, and we'll try and attend ourselves, so that's great. Oh, tonight is? Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Hour and a half. It's really quick. It'll fly by. And it's not preachy.
Tonight's at 6:30.
6:30 tonight on Monday.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, very much.
What's it cost?
Eight whole dollars. And you're a senior. You're a senior, so seniors, I think, are six dollars, and students are five dollars. I, we, thirty-two dollars. You got to watch it. I'm sorry, and popcorn is three. That's for the largest bag.
Thank you. Again, briefly, I know we've talked about a lot of issues going on this week, but invariably, Wednesday night, the Guess Who will be at the RP Funding Center? Guess who? Guess who? Guess who? The band, and in a local band, Chris Statterfield Band will be leading off for them. So it's a local artist as well as some old guys playing around on Wednesday night.
All right, other comments? Like Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, we've had a lot of, at least I have in my meal, a lot of community engagement recently, and just want to, you know, continue to encourage that because, you know, a lot of times we, you know, we talk to our friends and our family, and when individuals come here and they speak, it does, it gives us maybe the same preference that we had or the same ideas, but, you know, so I just want to...
Matters.
Publicly encourage that, you know? We try to get to all of them, and if it's a hot-button issue, sometimes we'll get a lot more comments than maybe we can get right back to. But also, I saw Heath and Laurie, I think, pop in when I asked that question, just, again, kudos to them. They're out there, everybody's listening to this, and thank you to our team here for answering that, but just, you know, just again, thank you for the hard work everybody's doing.
And they hold 20 cubic yards each truck.
Is that what it was? Okay, I tried to pull it up, and I saw half that, so 20, okay.
Mr. Brosart got us that information, so appreciate it.
Heath got it to me quick.
Okay, good.
Credit to Heath.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, a couple of items. I was fortunate to attend the Polk County Day during the legislation session in Tallahassee last week. Sean and I met with the lobbyists, and it was real educational. The second item is that, speaking of community events, I sometimes attend the community neighborhood associations, and I attended one several weeks ago, and the neighbors asked me to relate to the city commission that they still have a problem with, in the Lake Wire neighborhood, with prostitution. And something's been going on when I was president of my neighborhood association. It's something's been going on for decades, and so they want, they wanted me to share this. They said, will you share this with the fellow commissioners? I said, I certainly will. So I'm just kind of letting y'all know that it's still an ongoing issue, so we need to put our heads together if we can and kind of resolve it.
Appreciate that. I know that is an issue that LPD works hard on, and it is tough, but thank you. Commissioner Madden?
I just wanted to, speaking about neighborhoods, that's a good segue, that Paul Diggs is having their annual Save Our Children campaign this weekend at Simpson Park, and it's always a great event to be able to celebrate the children. And so I just wanted to make sure if you're out and about this weekend to check out Simpson Park.
Commissioner Reed?
I just want to ask a question. What is the threshold for, we have a restroom at a park? Is there a size for, I've had some parents ask me about restrooms at some of our parks.
There is not, there's no requirement either in our development code or in state statute that requires that you have a restroom in an open-air park facility.
Thank you. My final comment will be, I thank Commissioner McCarthy for a great job while I was out, and it's wonderful to be able to... She does so capably. And with that, we are adjourned.
Just real quickly, I just, I know some of you were not able to be at a agenda study on Friday when I introduced our new Assistant City Attorney, Alex Lambach, who's sitting to Ramona's right. He joins us from Florida Poly University, where he was Associate General Counsel, was also a prosecutor under Jerry Hill, so we're very happy to have him.
Good.
All right, great. Welcome.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate you being here. We are adjourned.